Last time. I don't want to bore everybody.
You're recording?
We're, I'm being recorded. Okay, is anybody else recording this? Okay. This has a continuation of the public hearing dealing with the Crossroads Solar Plan. And we have a number of items for discussion from members, so I think we'll just go right into those. All right. And is there anybody that's joining us on?
Yeah, we've got Rob Makowski.
We've got John Flynn, Rob Makowski, and Dennis Murray.
All right, so whenever they want to step in, you know, you can deal with that. The first, the first items are from Madison Fitzley. You have three, three items up there. Yours?
My first one was confirming the status of the 2002 DP investigation that part of it brought up.
He wants to note these and just respond right away, I mean, just open dialogue, great. Rob, I don't know if, if you want to take this one, so we had a call earlier today, Rob, why don't you go with it?
Yeah, no, Mike, can you repeat that one? Sorry, I couldn't hear the full.
An open item from the DEP that we talked about last time that you had investigated is?
Got it, yeah, so we've done a file review at the Mass DEP office in Springfield, and we didn't find anything related to a dumping violation in that area. We do know from the record of Notice of Landfill Operations that a portion of the landfill goes on to that eastern parcel, which, as we understood, you know, now there's been an A and R plan that has combined those. So what I'm wondering is if, if anyone from the town might have some documentation on that that discusses, or at least documents, what that violation might have been in that area?
I do believe that, sorry, I do believe that Mark Langgonyne said, if the company wishes to obtain any documents related to 2002 DP dumping violation and associated orders of conditions, then they contact the Selectman's Office and begin there. I must stress once again the area of when. No, that, that is good, address that.
So that.
I guess you started the Selectman's Office.
That file would be through the Selectman.
Okay.
So I would say that they should either, one, have a record of it, or two, be able to obtain a record of it through, through the files at the Highway Department.
Okay.
Our next stuff.
Thanks, thank you.
Madison?
My next one was, we talked about last week about how this is based on 2019 technology, and if there's a newer technology that might have higher output for each panel, but reduce the number of panels.
Yeah, we're looking into that. There is the ability to look at higher watt panels. Obviously, we've acquired some of those panels already to meet the ITC 30% requirement. But that is something we will consider. You know, essentially based on some conversations, you know, I had with Mark Langgonyne today. We're trying to work an arrangement with that area, so we will consider that as part of the overall plan.
And maybe even just to back up, so Stephen from Amara's, Tom Brady making a little something for the record. So Steve was out on the site today and met with Mark, and they, they walked around. I don't know if you want to give a little recap of.
Yeah.
Because it was staked, and so I know that you and Mark were out there taking a look at that stockpiling area.
Yeah, so Westin Sampson, they did stake out the area of the stockpiles. So I met Mark Langgonyne out there today at three o'clock, walked the area. And, you know, we talked about certain options, you know, we were hoping from Mark that we might be able to get half that area back, you know, in exchange for us cleaning up the area, because, you know, he did say there's big stockpiles of stumps and big stockpiles of, you know, excess material that really isn't being used. He didn't want to commit to anything, which I didn't, you know, want to press him today. So we did say that we were connected early next week. And we also offered to, you know, potentially provide some, you know, funds to help organize, whether it's, you know, concrete blocks and ballast, you know, help organize the stockpile, so they could do a little consolidation.
As far as that goes, as long as Mark's compatible with, I don't think anybody in the board will have a problem.
Okay.
As long as Mark, that's something you gotta work out with him.
Yes, we're gonna touch base early next week.
John?
Um, could, just for my ignorance, what's ITC?
Uh, that is the investment tax credit for solar panels, and that's dropping down every year. So right now it's at 26%, but we secured panels for this project at 30%, you know, at a certain wattage.
Gotcha.
So therefore, we always.
If you use those panels for a certain amount of the array, then the whole of it qualifies for 30% investment tax credit versus a 26%, which obviously 4% is relative to the material. So that's, just the problem is that when you secure those 30s, you're securing older technology.
Yes.
And so that's why it's, it's a balance of, okay, so you can update the technology to use the higher watt panels, but then you lose the ITC, you know, you're down to 26% instead of the 30%. And so it's just a numbers game of figuring out how to make that balance work. So that's the exercise that they're going through now.
Okay.
Sorry, stuff like that.
That's, thank you.
There you go, so that all right.
Yeah, I, I talked to Rick also about that. He said, thank you. I mean, not Rick, I'm sorry, I talked to Mark.
Okay.
And he said, thank you for meeting up there. He understands a little bit better what's happening.
All right, Madison, you got one more?
Well, they kind of just answered it. My last one was looking at options to revise the layout.
Okay. Now we'll go to some guy named John Matthews.
Yeah. Um, do you know, and you may not, how many 10-inch and larger trees are planted in that area that you want to plant? You know, there's the 100-foot and the 50-foot area that you want to clear cutting. Not downstairs, say clear cutting. It's kind of what it says, okay? Um, and if they were with the mixes, how many deciduous and non-deciduous? So that was, just so I can get a better idea, what I'm looking for there is to better understand, and I've been up there, I did, I was up there yesterday after it's delineated. And there are a considerable number of larger overgrowth trees that you got. Some of them, you know, in, in the, in the area are being taken over by bittersweet and stuff like that. It's not a, I'm gonna say it's not a well-managed forest.
John, just gonna ask you to speak up.
I'm sorry.
You know, with these masks.
Yeah, it's not a well-managed forest, if you will. So just if you, if you've got an idea, rough numbers or whatever.
Yeah, and so just so that we're clear, not within the array itself, but outside of the array, I called it shade management last time, but the area that's gonna be cut, not grown.
And you're correct.
In that area.
You're correct. Okay, what I'm talking about is, yeah.
Yep. And just you're looking for a ballpark idea of what we thought.
Yes, you know, if you can leave some of the deciduous, you know, if you can't, then I understand. But that's what, kind of the idea that I'm looking for.
Yeah, yeah, we have not done that stuff.
Right, that's okay. Um, any storage devices, batteries or anything like that?
Yes, that's part of the project.
Yeah, okay. Um, what type of battery? Lithium?
It, it's gonna be the, yeah, lithium, lithium battery.
Okay. Self-contained?
Yeah, it's all gonna be in a storage container. It's got, you know, the HVAC system in there, fire suppression in the system. So it's basically on a big, you know, like, you know, shipping, shipping container. Yeah.
And there will be, right. It'll be here.
Yeah.
You just said fire suppression will be in there also.
Yep, that's all self-contained.
I'm sure the chief may ask questions on that. Liability insurance, do you have it yet? Or would you have it?
Oh, we will have it.
You will?
That's part of the lease agreement, no doubt.
The existing road, you, you've got that listed, you know, as part of the system, I'm going to say. Is that, is that an active part of the access to the field? That would be real, because you have some gigs, if you will.
Yeah.
But you don't, you plan on accessing from the, the field from that access road, am I correct?
Rob, can you pull up the planes again?
Yeah, sure, just give me a minute here.
You're talking about the access roads to the solar?
Yes, well, the access.
So the one-off, so the, the main drive is on Crossroad, and, and we will be planning to use that that leads up to the transfer station. But here, let me, let me share my screen here. It looks like I need permission.
I got, yeah.
What's the question on the road, John?
Is it gonna be part of the access?
Well, we'll need that road going up to the landfill, the dry road. Yeah, going up to the landfill during the construction process.
Yeah.
You know, bringing up materials and everything else. And then, you know, after that, you know, it's really just operation and maintenance. So we'll be up there, you know, once or twice a year, essentially, maybe four times a year. You know, using that access road to the landfill.
So can, can everybody see my screen?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I may have mentioned this last week, but, you know, worked with Amara'sco on probably 15 of these, and, and a lot of them are in a similar situation where the landfill is, is currently either a DPW operation or a transfer station or something like that. So there's always ways to, you know, accommodate that and make sure that, that the construction doesn't disrupt the, you know, typical residential access. But, you know, I'm not sure if that's, that's part of the reason for the question, but access will be up Crossroad. There's the existing paved area, and then this little spur will be installed for construction access. Deliveries will come in here. Once equipment's offloaded, there'll, there'll be a mass DEP requirement that you can't exceed seven PSI, or you have to be less than seven PSI essentially for ground pressure. So it's all low-ground pressure tracked equipment, excuse me. So things like the ballast blocks and the racks will all be picked off the truck, typically with an excavator and, and chains, and then they'll just, you know, drive it out and put the blocks in place. So there's a short access road here that gets out off of the public access out onto the landfill. And then for the ground mound portion to the east, there's a little loop road that's proposed now. And obviously, this is, you know, a little bit, still, still under consideration since, as Steve mentioned, he, he met with the Highway Department today. So, you know, there's still some little bit of uncertainty in this area, but we will still need some access out to the east.
Where you just showed that little access road area, that, yes. That looks like that's gonna be going through the, it's either gonna be going through or below possibly where the mulch pile is, for lack of better terminology.
Yeah, the compost piles, actually, we were out there today looking at it with Mark. It's on the very bottom side of that turnaround.
Yeah.
So, and we looked at that, and it certainly looks like there's a space there where our panels are, you know, to accommodate that compost. Going out, revisit that with our designers.
Okay, because, I mean, the compost pile is quite, I'm gonna say, not height-wise, but deep.
Yeah.
This way.
Yeah, it's probably, we estimated about 30 or 40 feet today.
I probably, I, I figured it out about 50, 50 to 60, but, you know, you're probably more accurate.
It goes to.
Oh. The fire flow test.
Yeah, Rob, do you want to, I think you have some questions about that?
Yeah, so we need to, and I'm not sure if it's the fire department we need to reach out to, or I know you mentioned last week the water board. But we, we have crews that can do that hydrant flow testing. We just need a little bit more information on the, the specific location, what else it's connected to. I know there was mention last week that it was originally installed to provide some, some flushing of some other wells. So we need a little bit more detail on that system in order to, to perform that. I mean, we can do it fairly quickly, probably within a week or two, but we just need to get a little bit more information on that actual line that connects to the, to the hydrant.
Chief, you got anything on that?
I do not, that would be probably, I would start the Selectman's Office, I'll begin with those plans. I'll use Selectman's Office for the help or, when, when it happens, not that whole system. And have the, or.
Yeah, if Selectman, the Water Commission may, I think it was probably Time Bond probably did the design.
I, I, my reference to it is when they were installed, we were told, never ever use them for fire suppression. The pumps just couldn't keep off, it wasn't designed for that.
Right.
There's no storage tank, variable speed, speed pump that keeps direct pressure on those lines. It's not, you know, it's not like your average water system where you got a huge storage tank somewhere in town and you're grabbing that off that pump station. It's just a, a simple well in the ground.
Yeah. So, but to, to answer that question, you'd probably need more details.
Sounds like it's just to be able to do.
We don't know. You need, you need, no, you need the facts, okay? So, and I, I respect what you're saying.
Oh, no, and I, I, yeah, I mean, definitely chase that out if you want.
Yeah. I, I think, I think we do, yes.
All right, next is Phil. Um, I'm just finding out that we still need to go over the decommissioning plan. Yeah, we're ready. We have that, we can do that now if you want.
Sure.
There's. Yeah.
I, okay.
We have a, a copy of it with us. Better somewhere on there?
I'm here.
Yeah. You want to talk, talk to us about this decommission process?
Um, sure, and, and I apologize, I was brought into this basically today. So I don't know the history of the project at all, but generally, and I know I've, I've provided some services for the town in the past for specifically decommissioning plans. But for solar projects on landfills, mass DEP requires something a little bit different than probably what you've seen in the past, and it's specific to landfills. If there's a FAM, a Financial Assurance Mechanism, already in place for the landfill, mass DEP requires a $70,000 per megawatt decommissioning plan. Or surety for a solar project. If there's not, they require, I believe, $90,000 per megawatt. So it's, I'm trying to think of some of the previous projects that I've reviewed for you, but generally, the community has asked the developer to provide a decommissioning plan and cost to remove the project from the site. On average, you know, that's between 30 to, say, $70,000 per megawatt. Because it's a landfill, there's some additional requirements. I'm sure Rob could touch on them as well. We work with them quite a bit. And review their material as well as, and, and they review ours. That the requirements to work on the landfill are, it's a little bit more difficult, a little bit more costly to remove the array. I'm not sure if you want to go into more detail about that, or?
No, I, I mean, I just.
We don't have a decommissioning plan.
No, we don't.
So here's, here's the issue at hand, with no decommissioning plan in the package.
Okay.
We look to tie and bond, okay? Because it's, it's a multifaceted decommissioning plan, where you say, yes, it's partially on the landfill and partially it's on, for lack of better terminology, a virgin area, okay? Not, not to be included into the landfill. So it's, it's a two-fast, two, two-phase type of decommissioning plan, however you want to say that. So what we're looking for, I'm going to say from the town's point of view, is what would it cost to replicate per our bylaws? Okay? And also, because we don't, we, we didn't include this in the bylaw for a landfill, because we had not the foresight to do that, so we would be looking for that also.
Okay, so you're looking for tie-in bond to review Amara'sco's package? And decommissioning plan, as well as the cost for them to remove the system, both the landfill and, I'll call it the project, I'm looking at the screen, is that east or plan east?
That's right, east, yep, you're right, Dennis.
Remove that section as well. And I'm just looking at a Google Earth, because I, and I just jumped into this. So, yeah, that's absolutely something we could do. And unless the applicant and the town's okay, then, you know, feel free to jump in. It's also something the applicant can provide, and we can review it on behalf of the community and provide input like we typically do.
But we don't have.
I think that was the intention, is that we would provide it, tie and bond would review it, correct?
But it's not in the package tonight. So in other words, for us to go forward, we would need that. And if you want tie and bond to review what you have, but we don't have one, is what I'm saying.
Understood.
So what we asked, in lieu of not having one from you, okay? What we looked for is, you know, tie and bond to come up with the decommissioning plan and per our bylaw, okay? We do have a section in the bylaw for decommissioning. So why don't we just pull one together and then submit it and get it to tie and bond?
That's fine.
Okay.
Either way, it works. I think that'll be probably the simpler way to do it, maybe more expedited. Okay, Rob, is that okay? I just volunteered you for some work.
Yep, that's fine with me.
And so Wendell, our building inspector, wanted to note that there are cement, that it has to include the cement ballast blocks.
Okay. And do you have any example decommission plans? We've, we've submitted very basic decommission plans based on, just our, you know, experience doing projects on 20 or so landfills, you know, basically using a per-megawatt basis based on our experience. Or, you know, in very rare circumstances, you know, we've had to provide very detailed decommissioning plans, you know, based on, you know, kind of a equipment removal basis. So just wondering what the, the board is, is looking for here.
We, we've got a few, and Jordan can give you copies of them.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll ask you also to review and refer back to 7.16.8, which is the removal for de-commissioning and/or abandonment.
I just noted that stormwater needed to be reviewed, and I just, I think we have a note from Stormwater from Garrett.
I forwarded to them last year. One.
I'll tell you the truth. I didn't read it enough to speak to them. I just had it, so I'm gonna have to play very.
Well, this was from last meeting, March 25th. I got a prior meeting, so this, last time. I just sent it to.
Sent it to Rob?
To Rob for review comments. So that's why I stated that.
Right, I mean, Gary states, you know, you do have to file an application for a stormwater permit. There is a hand in stormwater, you know.
So basically, Gary was the chair of the Stormwater Committee, okay? He reviewed the application, it's basically what you submitted, I'm saying you, okay? And it should include construction sequencing, construction supervision and reporting, proof of filing and NOI with the EPA, a long-term operation and maintenance, as they will affect stormwater runoff issues and other requirements as spelled out in the bylaw. I would also recommend stormwater drainage design report be peer reviewed. That would go to tie and bond. The runoff coefficients may need to be revised based on the impervious surface, I mean, impervious nature of the above-ground mounted solar panels. And I spoke with Gary about it, and there's some questions about how it's calculated, okay? So, and he also goes on to talk about the system.
And there are still four waivers that you requested from last year, those being the site plan, scale size, the setback waivers on the west side, 50 feet, on the north side, 40 feet, south and east to remain at a, at 100 feet. And Mr. Kendrick requested that the penalty increase to 120, I believe. It was, it was a request from a citizen.
Can I respond to that, sir? I requested 150, but I did some, a little research this week, coming back into the, into the work areas with a 100-foot measuring thing, and there is not enough room for an additional 50 feet. There's only 130 feet between the edge of the buffer and the closest array of panels. And in my mind, that's not enough for shade management, or it would be more than that. So, but I really shouldn't even say that, because I want to try to keep the integrity of the 100-foot buffers or the setback area, as it's, as it's referred to in the narrative. So the 50 feet, I, I, I know that, unless major design changes were made, and I know that's not possible at this point.
Do you have a discussion on that?
The last one, no, that's spot on and very reasonable, thank you.
I did have another question about that, if, if there's, if there's opportunity to do that. Bring it up now, okay. I would just like to know from Amara'sco, is there any at all work that's planned for that setback area, that 100-foot, especially on the south side? Is there anything planned in that area? Because according to the narrative, the text later could be. And I just want to know if, if you guys have planned any work in that upper, that 100-foot setback.
Sir?
Rob?
No.
I don't think there's anything, any work involved in there.
No, the, the limit of work line is 100 feet off of that southern property line. So there's, there's no work proposed within that 100 feet.
Okay, because there seems to be some implication in a couple of sections of the narrative. For instance, on page, page five, and it's talking about screen. On the top of page six, it says, project site of greater than six acres, a minimum 100 feet of vegetation buffer with 50 feet being undisturbed, and the other 50 feet closest to the property line being no disturbance at all. So that, that does not apply to the setback area?
No.
Okay.
Not, that's right.
Yeah, I think you answered the other question I, I had about, about the variance to the setback area on the north side and the east side. You want to, you want to change those setback parameters, but you're gonna keep intact the east side and the, and the south side? Is that, is that what I understand?
The south side.
Yeah, the south side.
And the east, the east will stay as well.
Yeah, okay, correct. All right, that's, that's all I wanted to know.
That's a request.
Correct.
And another request was the system, the water storage system. And I believe Deputy Fire Chief Farrell strongly recommended the 30,000 gallon. And it'll depend on the, the flow test will, will influence our decision also.
Yeah, and that's still open. Maybe two points, just to go back to the stormwater piece of Time Bond, just to make sure that they are, in fact, going to peer review the stormwater report that Rob put together, just so we're keeping so.
Uh, Rob put together, just so we're keeping, so they're going to review, Rob's going to put together the decommissioning plan, Time Bond's going to review that. And then Rob already has put together the stormwater report, Time Bond's going to review that as well, just to close.
Tom, Tom, can I just, sorry to interrupt, can I just jump in real quick? So Dennis, it sounds like you haven't really had a chance to look at anything, but we're working through the natural heritage process as well. And one of the modifications that we've made to the stormwater design is. They requested that we move this northern part of this northern basin to beyond three hundred feet from the stream bank. So in order to do that, what we're going to do is take this part of the basin and move it to the south, so I mean, it's. It's not going to change a whole lot, it will change some of the grading in the area, the overall basin size should be about the same, but. Just as an FYI, that's, that's sort of the, the final piece and we just, you know, got some confirmation from that late last week from natural heritage that they're okay with it as long as we. Move this basin beyond three hundred feet from the stream bank.
Okay, that's, yeah, I don't see any concerns there.
Okay. So yeah, we'll, we'll wrap that up and, and get that out.
And, uh. Just one more, the fence, of course, is eight feet, so. And Rick Green's had a couple of things here. Alright, that's the water system, we've already done that. The mesh screen we've already talked about. No, the mesh was a different, I don't mean to interrupt, go ahead. Uh, on crossroads, Rick brought up the point that, uh, they didn't cover. And I don't mean to put, so he's going to have to verify this. But they didn't cover the fence so that you could see the area from crossroads, is it? I understood that correctly, right, John? For damage, so, uh, I thought Rick was suggesting, and I don't want to put his thoughts out. Uh, without just saying that, I thought he was suggesting the crossroad should stay unblocked.
And I thought the opposite.
Yeah, I had it, I had it as the opposite, I had it.
He wanted it.
Right, I have mesh.
Yes. That's what I had.
As long as we figure it out.
Yeah, yes, I believe he wanted the mesh on crossroad, yes.
So if, if I can just ask a question to clarify, do you mean along this section here?
You are correct, yes.
So, so by mesh, do you mean the plastic slats or the actual cloth, like the fabric that gets strapped to the fence?
It would be actually not the slats, but the fabric that gets strapped to the fence. And usually it has, um, a, a little continent in. You got it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it just that limited area or the? Yeah, no, it goes to about, Rob, if you bring your, you have to start there and then keep going a little bit more, I think where, I think. Rick had said where the trees start to come in, so that right there, precisely.
Yeah, so the, the new tree clearing line is going to be here, but it, it's a little hard to see, but if I zoom in, um, yeah, the trees will be here, so it would probably be something like this.
Something, yeah, or maybe the next post down, whatever, yeah. Five or six, yeah. Five or, yeah, five, six, whatever.
And, and these, just, just to clarify, this is just a line type, so these, um, square blocks don't indicate a, a foundation, I mean, we, we still. As part of the process, so these, um. Foundations for the fences will be concrete ballast blocks too, because we can't drive the post down into the landfill, so. Um, that design is still being finalized, but I just want to clarify that this doesn't necessarily. Demonstrate the number of actual foundation blocks, it's just a line type so that you can see. The ballasted fence versus the, you know, post-driven chain link fence.
Is it going to be sufficient of, uh, the, the concrete? Uh, in a windstorm during wind, high wind?
Yeah, that's what we'll look at and, and that's why I want some clarification on that, you know, exactly what you're looking for. At for mesh, because certainly, um, you know, even though they have those cutouts in them, the, the fence can. Will be required to withstand a little bit more as far as wind with the mesh than it would if it's just going through the traditional fence fabric.
Yeah, and you've got another foot on top of it, instead of seven, you've got eight feet.
And it's ballasted.
Yeah. So there's, yeah.
If there is, we'll, we'll bring it back to you and say, here are the issues with it, and can we do slats or can we think of some other way to do it? Yes, okay.
Any else under green?
Uh, sorry, one, one more thing just to consider is. At least in the southern part here, there is an, an existing berm that's here, I mean, it's, it's not. That high, but this may provide a, a little bit, if, if the issue is concerned with being able to view this from crossroad. Um, you know, this may obscure at least the lower portion of the, of the solar array.
Where that, where the posted fence is, is, is the tier, I'm going to say like your first tier going up. If I looked at the. That's. As I'm looking from crossroad, it's kind of tiered, the, uh, that slope.
Yeah, it, it goes up pretty steeply here and then it starts to flatten out a little bit and then above this upper berm is where it gets really flat.
Flat, right, okay.
Anything else there? Any else under greens? And Jane has comments there regarding the compost. Any more on that? As far as Mark Woodgoings concerned, you're going to work out. Well, Mark has to be satisfied with some.
Okay.
Anything else right now?
Can we, can we talk about the underground storage tank a little bit?
That's very.
Yeah, 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 I mean, because we're just, frankly, we're having a tough time, um, on a couple of different levels, but I think even primarily finding a place on site. For it, um, without losing significant capacity of the array, I mean, I think that's, that's what we're up against, we looked at. Rob, do you want to go to that little island, I'll call it, by the, by that loop? Um, because, I mean. I guess it's trying to get a sense from the town. Thirty thousand gallons is, is a lot, especially for a solar array, um, it's also going to be, what, what was the diameter of it? Ten feet?
And ten feet by about fifty-four feet in length.
So you've got, I mean, it's beep, and I don't know, Rob, do you know the water table in that area?
Not here, but you know, in general, we feel like the water table is going to be pretty shallow, so the, the thing that. We have to look at as part of designing any underground storage tank is buoyancy effects, right, so if you have a situation with. Shallow groundwater table, uh, it's going to require, you know, depending on the type of material of the tank. It may require additional concrete ballasting to make sure that, you know, if the water table. Rises, you don't get buoyancy effects that ends up popping the tank out of the ground, so. Um, you know, we know that the site in general is, is kind of surrounded by wetlands, we've got some isolated pockets here. We've got wetlands down here, we've got wetlands over here, um. There's a lot of ledge, as we had mentioned, I think last week, uh, there's exposed ledge and, and those of you that have walked the site probably saw that. For yourself, so you know, there's, there's concerns as far as the feasibility of, of being able to construct this on site.
Is there any location offsite right next to it?
So I know the bylaw says that it, it needs to be in the hundred foot setback too, um, which. You know, I know we're, we're asking for waivers from those, but. The issue with, I, I, I believe the intent is probably to have it close to the road. Um, but where, within that setback, we've got a landfill, it, it makes it infeasible to. To do anything there, as far as offsite areas, I'm, I'm not really sure, um, I think largely would depend on property ownership.
And.
Two tens or two fifteens were feasible? Two fifteen?
I mean, I don't.
So, um, the, the road that leads out to the cell tower, is there room alongside that road? Because the other towns, those surrounding towns around this house, uh, systems that have three ten thousand gallon tanks. Um, and together, it's not saying you have to build one giant thing, how that's out, you can think outside the box and come up with a system. Uh, I think that's doable.
So if you have three tens or two fifteens, that's fine, I agree.
So the. The, the constructability issues would, would be the same, I mean, they may be a little bit smaller, I'd have to look at the diameters of the other ones, but. The other concern here is that, you know, in a landfill, while we've got. The plans that show the limit of waste and the limit of cap. Um, oftentimes in some of these landfills that were capped, you know, twenty, thirty years ago. What you find out on site is a little bit different than what's sometimes shown on the plans. So there's a little bit of concern with going, I mean, we know that based on the plans, these areas right next to these access roads are. On top of the landfill, so the concern is that as we move to some of these areas that we think are off the cap. We'd need to confirm that and, and in many cases, we've done, you know, like I mentioned, a, a lot of these solar landfill projects and. Oftentimes we see that the limit of waste and the limit of cap isn't necessarily exactly how it was shown on the ASB plans.
I would support Rob's statement on that as a. Third-party consultant, um, sometimes you don't want to go poking for things.
Right.
Just as a liability for the town as well.
Can I ask a question? Who, um, estimate on this, on the cost of this thing?
Um, Rob, what you look at today was like, you know, sixty, at least sixty, but based on. Uh, my colleague down Rhode Island who installed a much smaller tank. Uh, he thinks it's more, thinks it's closer to a hundred thousand.
That's what I'm going to do, because.
In the.
It's, it's not so much water table, it's wedge. And you gotta, you gotta, you're going to have to excavate high fifty, two hundred yards. Of, of area and there's just nothing but legend.
Yeah, that. And the other thing from a, a constructability standpoint is that. You know, we, we would need to meet the ocean trench safety requirements, right, so these, these have to be benched or sloped when we're going down. Whatever it ends up being, twelve or fourteen feet, so even though the footprint of the tank may only be ten feet by, say, fifty-five feet. You're going to have a significantly larger excavation area just in order to, to make it safe to, to be able to place this in the ground.
So I guess part of the question is, what are the alternatives? I know we talked offsite, you know, obviously there's, maybe. Natural heritage priority habitat in the area that we don't necessarily want to run into and obviously ownership issues. Is there something like mitigation fund? That we just pay into and say, here's sixty thousand dollars town. Take it and put it to your dam repairs, put it, or you can go and find another site and install it. There, because it's just, you know, the more we started to look at it, the more it seemed like. I don't know that it's going to fit anywhere on the site, even in whatever iteration, you, you put it in at, at three tens, two fifteens, one thirty, I mean, break it up how you want. There's going to be an issue fitting it on the site, um, and again, I don't know that. I can appreciate the genesis of the bylaw, I don't know that thirty thousand gallons of water does anything for solar fire. Um, I would, you know, maybe something less would be appropriate for just this field, but understanding where it's coming from.
It's not, it's not for the solar fire, it's for the red ones, it's all around. For them, it's for their, it's for their property. If having the solar field in their backyard or side yard is something for them, now at least it's a pro for them. So everybody, the, the whole solar committee was built on, no one wanted any more solar in town. I'm not saying that, you know, I'm in the middle of the road with that, I just, they, they came to me and said, do you have anything to add? So I was, what can I give a pro to this if someone wants, you know? Yeah, you, you didn't have a chance or a reason to speak up for that solar field, but it's there. So at least you could have some fire protection, we know how bad the drought was in town, we know how bad the deal is. We definitely need to start thinking about the infrastructure, a water supply for, you know, for these people, especially, that's a great pro for them. Um, to have in their neighborhood, at least they have some water to, uh, to help them if, if they, if they need, right? That's really nothing to do with solar.
Okay.
Is that true?
What?
What's, what is it?
Yes, really?
That's why, that's why I wrote into the bylaw.
Okay.
How, Bennett Road site for water, you know, water storage site at front of Bennett Road, right, right? That's only a couple hundred yards, I think, right? Yeah, and during the drought, it wasn't usable. There are, it's sister tank, it's used in the winter time and summertime, it's there all the time, and then breathe, it's a very viable water source. That's, and I understand there isn't a location, you're saying there's not a location, um, and you're afraid to dig up there, I understand that, but. I think it really needs to be considered at a different location, if that's, if that's the case.
You have suggestions? As far, as far as a different location?
No, no, I found my end, but it's somewhere we could, uh. A property somewhere perhaps?
I don't, I don't know, it's, I'm asking you.
Yeah, well, one at the fire station, you know, one at school somewhere public. I mean, the beauty of, of this at the solar field is that we can get our equipment off the road, we can operate safely off the road for firefighting. Um, you know, we're not on the side of road, people aren't speeding by us, we can train up there too as well, it's perfect spot for training. Again, we're off the road training, you know, we're safe. There's so many benefits to having it, that in my opinion, it needs definitely to be located, um, somewhere. If, if it's, if you're saying it's absolutely impossible, um, at this site.
Do we also have anything on this?
Uh, one other thing I'd like to add, if you are going to blow past those hydrants, I would strongly get permission from the select board to have them notify. Um, everybody that's tied into that, because you're not going to get disruption in the water.
Tied into, so the residences that are tied into that?
Right.
Can I ask a specific question? I mean, it's only a four-inch lot, can't you, like, there are engineering charts that will tell you how much it will be a four-inch long? You know how you know, why?
I didn't, I didn't.
We asked for a fire test, that's it. That's the end of the conversation, we're going to get a fire test, because we need the data. We don't need hearsay, we need data. If it doesn't work, then it doesn't work.
All say, it might be.
I'm saying, that's it. Okay?
Anything else? Anything else on the project itself? Yes.
There's a. Utility question about, or I'm sorry, are we using, is this the overhead poles or are we going underground?
Rob, overhead poles or underground?
For the. Yeah, that's a good question, so it'll be, um. Underground from the eastern array up to this island here. Um, and then there'll be a pole that's installed right up here. Um, so you can see actually, there, there'll be several poles, see the cross marks here. Um. So that's where it'll go overhead, but within the arrays themselves, it'll all be underground, um, on the east side. Where we can excavate, at least in areas where there's not exposed ledge. And it'll all be mounted above ground on the landfill itself, again, because we can't penetrate down through the landfill cap, so there'll be. Um, usually run in, in cable trays or, or conduits that are supported on concrete blocks that are placed on the landfill cap itself.
Yeah, but like, so from crossroad, you'll have to go up the landfill, right? So about the underground, I'm just concerned with where the cap edges.
No, everything, everything from the top will be run, um, down to crossroad above ground on poles.
Anything else, anybody? Well, obviously, we're not ready for a vote.
We don't have all the information?
No, so. We're going to have to continue to meet again in summer of the day. Can we agree upon a date?
So we've got to just like go down the list to make sure that we know our homework so that we can, can give you an accurate answer, so it's. Um, confirming the DEP violation, you know, starting with the select board, so that should be relatively simple. You're working on the two thousand nineteen technology and figuring out what we're dealing with, stockpile, you're working with Mark on. Uh, get a sense of the amount of ten-inch trees in that I'll call shade management area. Um, fire flow test. Uh, decommissioning plan, so working with, uh, Rob's going to put it together and send it over to tie-in bond, tie-in bond's. Ty and Bond's also going to look at the stormwater, we have to update the plans, make sure we have the fence at the eight feet, not the seven feet. And update the plans to show the mesh along crossroad. Um, and then obviously, once we get a sense of that fire flow, then we can, I think with the, the, the water system. Like, we're going to obviously be thinking based upon what we heard, let's see if there's another suitable location somewhere else, and then maybe there is some. Payment in lieu or some, something like that, that we can get a little bit creative. Uh, so I heard those is our marching orders, I don't know if I missed anything from.
About the, uh, decon fire.
Yeah, yeah, we'll put that together and then send it over to Ty and Bond for their review.
The, the trees and the, and the shade management.
I'm sorry, not decon, uh, the, uh, compost.
Oh, oh, um, you were, you were going to look at our designers, I think, great point. Uh, yeah, we were going to look at with the designers just to make sure that, you know, we're sensitive to that area. Um, and I, I think the sense with the trees was just to give a, a, a general ballpark of how many are there. Uh, within that shade management area that we're going to be taking down, I don't know that.
Okay, I didn't think that was, I didn't think you were asking for that, I just thought.
Go ahead.
I, I didn't think you were necessarily asking for the number of trees, I thought you were just asking for a general.
Yeah, yeah, a general sense. A general sense, if you proves the timber, you know, uh, somebody walks through, those are, just a rough estimate. In that area, that there's a hundred or there's.
Hmm, yeah. Um, one question I have to members of the board, are you okay if, if as we get these things pulled together? I send it directly to Dennis, or do you want me to send it through the board first? As far as the stormwater plan and the decommissioning plan?
So, Joanne? The board?
Yes, question, do you want us to send it to you to send it to Dennis, or do you want us to just send it to Dennis?
We usually sign a contract, we provide the estimates.
Right, sure.
We sign. And we can turn it around quick, it's not like.
Yeah, we're ready to sign whenever they have that estimate.
So I guess you could probably send it right to, uh.
Contract.
Pardon me?
And let them provide the contract.
And let them provide the contract. Right, so Ty and Bond could get the, get the, get it in their hands, they can then provide a contract to us.
Perfect.
You know what I'm saying, how much it's going to be.
Yeah, we've been a little degree, and we'll, you can send it, we'll sign it, scan it, send it back, and then, then Ty and Bond can do it, they know they're getting them.
Yeah.
I'm not concerned about that, quite honestly, we're happy to look at it whenever you send it over to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, sorry, just, I, I couldn't hear everything there, but should I send it to Joanne first, or just send it, send them right to Dennis?
Sounds like both, Rob.
Yeah, well, okay, that's fine. We'll do.
And I don't have your new email, Rob, I can only find your old one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to you, Dennis, after this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else right now?
Also, that sounds good, so I think, Rob, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Which are. Yeah, I think some of them are dependent on some other things, obviously, the trees are going to give you a sense, and so maybe it's like a partial waiver, obviously, the. Water tank is something we're investigating, the, I mean, I, I don't know how much of an issue there will be with the site, the, the plan set. Size, um, I guess it's getting a read on the setbacks, you know, from the west and the north, and if that's going to be an issue. That's going to be an issue. Um, so I don't know if we want to get a sense from the board, whether that's going to be okay or, or, or not. Um, and then in the meantime, Rob, I'll ask you to start thinking about, because I think the, you're the long pole in the tent on this. And just for fire flow, decom, and then when Dennis can turn something around, that's probably going to inform, you know, are we talking two weeks or four weeks? And just.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, um, if we can, you, you know, some of it, of course, depends on what information we get from the, the selectmen, um, right? So if we can get information on the hydrant and what's connected to it, I, we should be able to do that within a week or so. And, um, I think we can also get the stormwater, uh, that one basin modified and pull the decommissioning plan together. Probably within a week or two, so, um, I, I'd, I'd say hopefully within, you know, a couple of weeks, we'd have all this stuff nailed down.
And then, and then. You would investigate the use of, uh, some higher wattage panels to give the highway department.
Yeah.
So you could come back with a revised. As far as. Uh, I don't know, I'm going to ask the experts what they're thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if, if we can, I know you want to get to stuff as soon as possible, obviously, if we can continue to have discussions with, you know. Uh, DPW fire peer reviewer along the way.
Yeah.
You know, because otherwise I'd say, let's meet in two weeks, let's give you an update, and then we'll meet two weeks after that, but I don't want to burden anybody's schedule for doing that, so. The alternative would be four weeks, but hopefully, it's just that if we can't get feedback, then like, we're dead in the water for, for two weeks, I'm not getting anything.
When is the next scheduled planning meeting? That might work out time wise.
The next schedule one is actually next Wednesday.
Oh, next Wednesday, that, that's planned.
Yeah.
No.
That's the fourteen, not next Wednesday.
The second, maybe we check in then.
Yeah.
So that would be. The second and fourth Wednesdays are a regular meeting.
My, my guess is that we'll probably still be gathering information or getting feedback from, say, Ty and Bond in that case, and we might get them the information by then. But, um.
Well, what we can do, listen, we can put it on for the fourteenth, and if they're not ready, I can start the meeting and continue it out for one month, you know, I have the show.
Sounds like.
Or continue up for another two weeks.
Okay, right.
So we'll put it on for the fourteenth.
Yeah.
And just keep in touch with Joanne, and if, if, if it's not going to work out that night, then. We'll, we'll just open and close it.
Open and continue.
And it's. For Ty and Bond's schedule, if you can get us something by the. Probably going to hate myself later, but like, by the end of the day on Thursday, the eighth. We should have comments back, you won't have much time to review them, but we'll have comments to you by the fourteenth, by the end of the day.
Okay.
On the board side, if that gives you enough time, but we'll flip this quickly, and if you could piecemeal it to us, Rob. We, you know, we can provide comments on the stormwater prior to the decommissioning plan.
Okay, great.
It's easier.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, I'm there. Otherwise, I'll hear most of the continued meeting until the fourteenth. Motion, I mean, most of the continued time agreed, they will fourteen sixteen.
Second.
Four favorite.
Thank you very much.
There's no. John, there's no other business before.
None.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.